Thank you for your patience this morning. We're starting just a few minutes late. It is ten oh six. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Talaqua City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Long.
Here.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Hires.
Here.
Counselor Matt.
Here.
Thank you very much. A public notice of the meeting was provided August sixteenth at nine AM at this location. We are here today for a presentation by special counsel for the city. Mr. Floyd is here with us. Just a reminder, the trustees, the hospital trustees, and the city council over the course of last February and March, voted to retain the services of Mr. Floyd, and so we appreciate your being here this morning.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate you guys getting together on a Friday to listen to me drone on about trust law. I'm sure you guys don't have anything better to do with your time, so thank you. And then thank you for the members of the Hospital Trust Authority that are here. I appreciate you guys participating as well. I also want to just state for the record, you both have excellent counsel representing you, Gilbert and Weidman and Crowdon Levy, Karen Rieger. We've worked with both of those firms for many, many years. If you told me to assemble a legal team for a hospital and a municipal trust, and you told me that I was not allowed to participate, these are the people that I would pick. So I would like to commend you for your selection of them. I'd also like to commend you for doing this. This is not an easy conversation. These are complicated issues that we're talking about and dealing with here. But I think that both the council and the hospital trustees are being proactive, are trying to figure out exactly how this all needs to work together in a positive way. So I do commend you for taking this on. This is a, you know, we're dealing with a public trust here. We're dealing with kind of, you know, the public responsibilities, the public obligations that both bodies have. And so coming into this the way that you have, I do honestly and truly commend you for this. A word of introduction about myself, because I've talked to your mayor, but a lot of you guys don't know who I am. My name's David Floyd. I'm a partner with the law firm Floyd and Driver. We are bond counsel in Norman. We've been involved in public financing issues. Oh, going back to the early nineteen seventies, late nineteen sixties throughout Oklahoma, we represent municipalities, counties, hospitals, water districts, sewer districts, universities, any sort of public body that can issue debt. So that's the background that I'm bringing to this. I'm really looking at this from a public finance perspective. And the way that Oklahoma finances most of its capital projects is through a public trust. Public trusts are special statutory creatures. They have certain powers, certain opportunities, certain flexibilities that a city or county government simply does not. And so when you're looking at a situation like this, you really need to start with, okay, what are we dealing with here? What is a public trust? A public trust is, you know, statutory created body that has to have a governmental body as its beneficiary. A public trust cannot exist without a government somewhere accepting beneficial interest and having oversight on it. Now, public trusts are separate and distinct legal creatures from you guys. And there's some very good reasons for that. For one, a public trust acts as a liability shield. If something goes wrong related to a hospital, now instead of someone coming after the city, they've got a trust that's in place that can stand there and say, no, we've been operating this. We have our own assets. We have our own policies, procedures, and we are there to protect the city. The other thing that trusts can do is they can be more flexible. They can respond quicker to changing events on the ground. They have the ability to issue debt in ways that a city government cannot. They have the ability to contract with third-party service providers with other entities that a city simply cannot do. So there is a lot of value to having a trust involved. When you look around the state at how cities, counties exist with their hospitals, probably the most common way that you would find is the structure you have here. With a public trust operating and taking on day-to-day responsibilities and a city or a county behind them exercising oversight and control. So structurally, there's nothing wrong with what you guys have here. I think there's some things that can be done at the margins to kind of make everything work better. But structurally, what you guys have is very solid. So when we first took this on, my charge from you all and from the trustees was to consider, there's a few issues that you guys brought up, that the hospital trustees brought up. There were questions that have arisen as far as how, you know, who has the power to do what? How does this need to work? Who has oversight? And then I was also charged with looking at the trust indenture and the original lease agreement, both from nineteen seventy-four, that kind of set this thing in motion. So I've looked at those documents. Your trust indenture is a fine document for nineteen seventy-four. I would not write it and put it in place in twenty twenty-two, but again, there's nothing underlying it that is structurally flawed that we need to deal with. So let's just kind of start off. I'm going to talk through the issues that we've been looking at. I will propose a couple of suggestions for you guys. As I've told everyone here, the nice thing about this is that you've brought me in to kind of look at this and give you my opinion. And you both have excellent counsel. I would suggest that you consult with both your councils afterwards as to what I've said. And you're free to take whatever action you want. This is my independent opinion. Like I said, we've done bond council work for a long time. We have not done work for the city of Talaqua for quite some time, so I am truly looking at this with an open mind. So the first thing that we started looking at was the question of the appointment powers of the trustees. And when we look at a public trust, like I said, this is a separate and distinct legal entity. It controls its own budget. It controls its own finances. It sets its own meetings. It has to have that separation for liability purposes, and that is set out in state law. But separateness does not mean there's no oversight and there's no control. So if you look at the Oklahoma Public Trust Act, it states in there that the beneficiary, the municipality beneficiary, has to be able to control the appointment of trustees. Going beyond that, going into federal tax law, when you look at the issuance of tax-exempt securities, there are only basically two creatures that can issue tax-exempt debt. Governments or entities that are acting on behalf of the government. The tax code refers to them as political subdivisions, subordinate entities, things like that. So when you start looking at what is a subordinate entity for federal tax purposes, there's three things that they look at. Does this entity possess sovereign powers? Does this entity have governmental purposes and is there governmental control? Sovereign powers is the ability to tax the police power and the power of eminent domain. We're not looking at that in this case. Governmental powers is basically, is this a power that a government would possess that they could carry out on their own, but they're choosing to delegate down to this other entity? So in this instance, we're talking about the power to maintain and operate a hospital. That's a statutory power that cities and counties have in Oklahoma. So you can delegate them to that. So that gives them that cover of public purpose. The last thing to look at is governmental control, and governmental control truly means a governmental body. It means an elected body at some point has to have oversight powers, has to have the ability to control the appointment of trustees. Now, again, you appoint these people, and when you do that, you are saying, you know, we are entrusting you with this responsibility. We believe that you are able and competent to carry out these roles, and we're not going to sit here and hover and micromanage. We're trusting you to do this. And if you do things that we don't like, we have the power of appointment and removal. So that's kind of how we get into the public trust setting here. So when you look at the appointment powers, those are things that you guys statutorily have. And if you look at the trust indenture, the way that it's been updated over the years, it says that, you know, the trustees can propose a slate, which they can. That slate, they have a process that they go through to determine who they think are suitable trustees. I think that having looked at their process and what they do, I think it's a very good process. I think that they do a good job of evaluating people for this role, and they propose them to you. But that's what it is. It's a proposal. You guys have to have the ability to control who sits on that board. So you can accept it. You can reject it. You can pose your own slate. That's the power that you guys have in this situation. The next question that was brought up to me was the question of extraterritoriality, other issues that are going on outside of the city limits of beneficiary. And this is an area where the law has changed a little bit over the years. At one time in the past, there was basically no restriction on it. And then I believe it was a county in western Oklahoma, and I'm not going to name any names, started conducting business with a public trust in eastern Oklahoma, and a lot of things went back and forth, and legislature stepped in and said, no. This is not going to be something that we're going to permit. We're going to put geographic restrictions on the ability of a trust to operate outside of the limitations of its beneficiary. Now, that has gone away. And what the legislature, what the courts look at now is you can operate outside of the territorial jurisdiction of where you are located. The question is, what benefit does that provide to the people that are located within the residents and citizens of the beneficiary? And the only hard and fast rule they said is it can't be money. You can't come back and say, well, these people benefit because we've received X amount of revenue. But when you start looking at it of, okay, well, we've expanded outside of our geographical footprint, and we're now operating in this community, but we were able to bring an oncology lab with us. We're now able to, you know, expand services, not, you know, the type of amount of medical service that we can provide, the type of medical care. We now brought this in. That is a benefit. You can look and say, okay, there are certain patient service thresholds that we have to hit in order to qualify for certain federal grants, in order to bring in, you know, certain Medicare funds, things like that. So now we've expanded our footprint, and we've got enough people in the system now that that allows us to do that. That would be considered a benefit to the citizens of the beneficiary. So when you start looking at things like that, yes, you can operate extraterritoriality. I don't have a whole lot of concerns about that, so long as you've got a justifiable reason as to why you were choosing to do that. The next thing that we looked at was the open meetings, open records requirement as it applies to subordinate entities of a trust. And first off, if you're a public trust, you're subject to open meetings, open records. If you are an entity that is created by a public trust, you're subject to open meetings, open records. If you go past that, and you start looking at entities that are joint ventures or that you've joined as a part of, but it's not really yours, you're just kind of cooperating in this, now you start looking at two things. You look at, is there public money involved in funding this? And is there a level of delegation of the authorities of the trust to this other entity? So if it's something that the trust is funding, then that's going to be subject to open meetings, open records. And by funding, I mean, that funding is what keeps it going, not just we're going to give you a little bit of money here and there, but it is truly being funded, and that's the only thing that operates it. Likewise, if it's a situation where the trust gets to appoint a majority of the members of the governing board, whatever this venture is, that looks like actual control. That looks like a subordinate entity of a trust. So what I would suggest on things like that is you've got to look at every single one individually, and you've got to see what's the control, what's the funding level, kind of where are we in this individual, in this specific one? I have not undertaken to evaluate all the joint ventures and subordinate entities that they have. That would be a question for them to kind of look at and see where are we? But those are the rules. Those are kind of the parameters that they have to fall within. Those were, I believe, the big issues that you guys had me looking at. As far as the, oh, I'm sorry, there was one more. After-required property. If you look at the original lease, it contains an after-required property clause, which essentially says any property that was subject to the original lease, it's the original hospital building, the equipment contained in the hospital building, or the revenues derived there from. If you pledge that as security, if you borrow against that, take a loan, take a mortgage against that, it becomes brought into the revenue, or it becomes brought into the lease agreement itself. I believe, and my partners and I believe, having looked at all of this, that that is a self-contained statement. So if you have the hospital that has revenues that are generated independently of those things, then that does not become after-required property subject to the lease. Now, I will point out, again, we're dealing with a public trust here. The public trust has to have the municipality as a governmental body as its beneficiary. So at the end of the day, if the trust dissolves, if the trust is wound down, everything that the trust has reverts to the beneficiary at that time. So just because something is not subject to the lease does not mean that it's out here somewhere on an island and the city does not have a beneficial interest in it at the end of the day. Again, they're a separate and distinct entity. You can't direct how they control those assets, manage, operate, and things like that. But it will still eventually revert to its beneficiary upon determination of winding down the trust. Those were the four big issues that I was asked to look at. Also, when looking at, you know, the trust indenture, the way it's set up, that document was put together in nineteen seventy-four. In nineteen seventy-four, the medical practice, the landscape around how hospitals were operated and run was not anything that's contemplated today. I mean, you were truly looking at, we've got a one-building facility, it's providing medical services in this community, and that's what that trust indenture is set up to do. It doesn't contemplate the way that medicine has developed. So when you look at what's going on, both in the state of Oklahoma and nationwide, you're seeing standalone hospitals go away. They simply cannot afford to operate. There's not money coming in. They can't keep providers. They can't keep, you know, specialized medicine, anything like that. So I live in Norman. If you go ten minutes south of my house to Purcell, that hospital is being taken over by, I think it's Mercy. And it's going to be, it's not going to have a whole lot of levels of care. It's going to be, we're going to stitch you up, and we're going to ship you off somewhere else. Go another thirty minutes south of my house to Falls Valley, that hospital's gone. Rural health care is becoming increasingly hard to do and to maintain at a high level. And I would like to compliment what you have. I mean, you have a very good hospital. You have a very good health system. It is very rare to see in rural Oklahoma what you have here. Going back to the trust indenture, that document wasn't contemplated for what you have here. Again, there's nothing fundamentally wrong with it. It is a legally valid document. It can continue to operate exactly the way it is. If you gave me, and this is where I get to set up here and say, you know, ignore political realities and practicalities. If you said you've got free rein, what do you want to do? I would rewrite your trust indenture. And I would start over, and I would put a modern twenty twenty-two document in place that more clearly expresses the relationship between the parties, that more clearly sets out appointment powers, that more clearly sets out the powers of the hospital. If you go in there and you look, it talks about, you know, you're going to provide hospital medical care, but what does that mean? I would expand that to really reflect more what a hospital, what a health system is being asked to do in twenty twenty-two. If you weren't going to do that, I would at least go in and amend the portions that deal with the appointment of trustees, just to clarify that as the beneficiary, here are the rights you have under state law, and here are the things that you have to have under federal law in order to preserve the tax-exempt status of the debt. And that's a big thing that, at least in my day-to-day life, I'm concerned with. We don't do anything that upsets the apple cart with respects to tax-exempt securities that are out there in the market today. Nothing good happens when you start tinkering around with that, and then the IRS comes in and declares a bond issued taxable. It's not good on anybody. So anything that can be done to avoid that would be my primary concern. As far as the lease agreement goes, I wouldn't do a whole lot to it. I would clarify some language in the after-required property clause. I would kind of more spell out what exactly we're talking here. So where is the line between what's covered by the lease and what's not? But again, it's an operable document. It's from nineteen seventy-four, but it still works. So I'm going to leave it at that. That's kind of where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have. If there's anything that I've said that you want to dig deeper into, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I commend you for doing this. This is the kind of conversations that need to happen more often between cities and their trusts. You get into a situation where there is kind of the separateness, and that really is not conducive for having a working relationship. Everybody that's involved in this, on your all's side, on the trust side, you are all public officials. You're all public officers, entrusted with looking out for what's best for the citizens. And I think from everyone that I've talked to, that is truly what everyone wants to do. So anything that we can do to have these conversations to facilitate this, from what I've seen, is a good thing. So again, I commend you for having this conversation, for taking on this exercise, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
As part of his presentation, he has asked for questions.
I guess one question that I've got is, we've discussed a lot about the nineteen seventy-four document, but nobody's made any mention of the twenty-ten document, which is the amendment. So in your assessment, do we feel as if the twenty-ten document or the amendment to the nineteen seventy-four, the twenty-ten version is in play? Or since you're saying nineteen seventy-four, is it safe to say that we're still technically operating off of seventy-four?
There's another amendment that I didn't mention in eighty-six. So seventy-four and eighty-six were the two that you look at, and okay, there's no question those two are in play. When you look at the two thousand and ten amendment, it is my opinion that based on the conduct and the way that things have been done for the last ten years, even though there may be, you know, and this is a gray area, you know, there's reasonable minds can differ on this. But the way that you guys have conducted yourself, I say you guys, the way that this council has operated, the way that appointments have worked for the past twelve years, you've basically accepted that as an amendment. Now, one city council cannot bind the next one. You guys are different in that regard. You know, you can't enter into contracts or agreements for more than one year. So that's where the gray wiggle room comes in in this. But as a matter of convenience and as a matter of what's been accepted practice for the last ten years, I would say if twenty-ten, if that amendment is working, I would probably go through the process of just formally adopting it and reratifying it, so there's no longer any question on there. But it is my opinion that by conduct, that's kind of where we have ended up.
Okay, so, but what I'm hearing you say is that regardless if the twenty-ten is in play, or if we're going to go off of that document, that the twenty twenty-three or something really needs to be modernized and redrafted as what we've been collectively working on. Is that something to it? So that way, the seventy-four, the eighty-six, the twenty-ten, all that goes away, and we're looking at something, whether it's the twenty-two model or a twenty-three model,
Again.
Probably the best practice.
If you give me free rein to do whatever I want, yes, I'm doing a brand new one. Now, there is a lot of history. You know, we're going back fifty years. There are things in that lease that you probably do want to carry forward as far as, you know, established practices, things that the hospital does, stuff like that, that you don't want to just completely leave behind. So I would not, I say start new. I wouldn't completely start new, but the major more trust sections of it as far as management control, purposes, appointment, things like that, yes, I would like to see that cleaned up.
Other questions, counsel?
I have a question about something you said, because I don't know that I fully understand what it means. But you said that the after-acquired property in the lease, it's a self-contained statement? Will you define that a little bit?
Sure. So I think there's a discrepancy here in what was intended in nineteen seventy-four and what the document says. I think if you got whoever wrote this fifty years ago into a room and could ask them, what did you mean by this? I think they would say, we intended that this is going to capture everything that the hospital does as far as expansion and growth. But if that was the intent, they shouldn't have tied it so tightly to what was listed in section one. They should have gone back and amended that to include new legal descriptions, to include other property. You know, if you look at your situation when you buy a house, a lot of times, you know, if a bank slid in an after-required property clause on my house, what they're really talking about is, okay, if I go out and I build, you know, put a pool in and build a poolhouse on there, that now gets roped into the mortgage. But what's not being contemplated there is that I take the loan the bank gives me, and then I go out and buy a completely separate third piece of property. That's not going to be caught by an after-required property clause. That's going to be something that's outside of the scope of that clause. So that's how I look at this. Now, again, reasonable minds can differ on this. You could get a property lawyer in here that says, no, this is what this means, and this is what it actually does. But just from my perspective, looking at it, that's what I believe the document says.
I wonder if that has anything to do, so in seventy-four, when the lease would have gone, the city council would have been the trustees. And then in eighty-six is when the city council, in eighty-six, decided to have a separate board of trustees. And so it almost sounds like they redid the lease or the trust indenture, but they didn't make the lease match that.
When you look at these two documents and you set them next to each other, they were clearly defined to work together. Whoever set this out, and you look at the effective dates of both of them, I think it's two days apart. I mean, this was a package deal when it was set up. And then, yes, when you start amending the trust, but you leave the lease as is, you start to get a little bit of divergence there. But yes, I think it's a fair statement that when they put this together, they intend those two documents to work as one.
One more question, as the same kind of question that Stephen had asked here. You know, in your explanation, I guess, with the poolhouse, right? So I guess the question is, if you pay off your house, or you then mortgage that house, you mortgage that asset, let's say refinance cash out, and now you're acquiring this other property. So you're basically, you're saying that even though the money that has been leveraged against that house and that poolhouse to acquire other property now does not necessarily fall under that here and after-acquired clause.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying if I go in and I do that and I default, the bank's going to come take my house. Because that's what was pledged is collateral security. So what needs to happen as far as that is somebody needs to go back to nineteen seventy-four and start tracking it. And I would say, you know, look at your bond indentures, look at your loan agreements, look at your notes, look at your UCCs, look at everything like that, and figure out what was tied to that original facility, because that's what's going to be covered under that clause.
Which then there's the added layer, because in nineteen seventy-four, this was the original facility, which we don't even own. Two floors of it anymore. But then it's moved
Yeah.
to the new building. But there's the new hospital. I mean, I haven't seen that.
Well, it would depend on, yeah, how that move took place and what the funds were to support that move. That's what I would tell you you have to go look at.
Are there any specific tax issues that you were talking about that we need to be wary of?
At this juncture, no. Now, when you start looking at, from the city's perspective, I don't think you have any issue. When you start looking at the hospital and debt financings there, hospitals are tricky. Every time I get a phone call from a hospital that says I want to do a bond issue, I cringe a little bit inside because of what are called private activity rules. Private activity rules get kicked into place whenever you have a governmental issued debt, and part of the proceeds of that are going to go benefit a private, non-governmental, non-public actor at the end. And you get to go through all sorts of tests as far as how much of the proceeds are going to go to this private use. You know, I've been in situations where we've gone out with a tape measure, measured square footage to make sure that we're within the parameters of what we have to do. So that's something that hospitals have to watch for. Again, I've not looked at any of the hospital's bond issues to know whether or not any of these issues are present, but it's something that you've got to have good bond counsel and good local counsel on your side to make sure that they comply with that. But from what I've seen, there's nothing that makes me question that for the hospital or the city. What I was referring to really is if you start meddling around, and if you start trying to exercise too much control over your subordinate, over your trust, does it start to look to the IRS's eyes like this is really an invasive thing? And, you know, that's really not a trust debt issue. It is truly a city's debt issue, and are they controlling and directing the proceeds? That's the sort of thing that would concern me.
So keeping those organizations separate.
Yes, yes. Keeping the separateness and doing that to to really look to what both sides provide here. I mean, the trust has flexibility. The trust, they are, they're public officers, they're fiduciaries of what is contained within that trust. You guys have an interest of transparency and of oversight and of making sure that the public funds are being managed in a proper way. So that's where, those are the two competing interests you have to have here. And you have to recognize that, you know, they are legal and distinct. And they have to recognize that we're not completely, we're not a standalone, independent deal. Public trusts don't exist without a government somewhere.
A lot of information.
I guess, sorry, I've got one more question. I've been right in the middle of this thing since the beginning, I think, so that's probably why I've got so many questions. But you touched on operating, you know, operating outside of essentially the city or even the county and the management of some of the other, you know, some of the other. And so I think that, you know, the key takeaway there that you had mentioned was that it's it cannot only be for monetary purposes. Is that right? I mean, it can't be in just an effort to make money. It has to somehow benefit the beneficiary as a whole. Is that, can you elaborate on that just a little bit, so I've kind of got an understanding of how we're not just, it's not just dollars and cents. It's more about being able to provide more services.
Sure. So.
That seems really tough to be able to decipher.
It's a facts and circumstances situation. I mean, you have to look at it holistically every single time and make the call. I'll give you the extreme example. Even more extreme, what I talked about earlier, there is a trust that operates out of, I believe it's Michigan. Even more extreme, what I talked about earlier, there is a a trust that operates out of, I believe it's Michigan or Wisconsin. Is it, you know what I'm talking about? It bills itself as a nationwide trust, and it says that we will issue debt on behalf of any municipality anywhere in the United States. Thank God, from my perspective, it has never done anything in Oklahoma, because that would really, really concern me. But they do it for fees. They do it for for revenue generation. So they've they've issued bonds on behalf of, I think there's some in Kansas. There's some as far away as California that they've done bond issues for. So when you look at an extreme extraterritoriality entity solely to derive fees, that's the extreme example that we're looking at. What we're looking at here is, you know, much more localized, and it's, you can't go out into this area and say the only benefit we're bringing for this is money. But if you go, say, across the county line, but you've got people that that, you know, live in Talquah, but they're they're closer to this next facility over that they've done, that's a benefit to them that's not solely for money. If you look at, you know, we're we're going to go partner with this facility over here that has an oncology lab that we don't have. But now our patients can go over there. That that's a benefit. If you, you know, you broaden it out and say, okay, well, now we've got other things to where we don't have to send someone from Talquah to Tulsa or to St. Louis or to Dallas or wherever, we can treat them here, or we've got something that's a little bit more local to where they could maybe do it, do the treatment outpatient and come home at night. That's the sort of benefits that we're looking at here. If it brings more money into the system as a part of that, okay, so be it. That's that's permissible. I mean, there's nothing that says you can't make money as you do this. But that can't be the sole driving factor when you're making that decision. Lot of information.
It's a lot of information. Okay, let, can you clear up legal liability for me? Because there's been discussion, obviously, in the time we've been discussing this, which seems like a lifetime at this point. Legal liability, because I know the trustees, they hold a huge amount of legal liability. And then we also, as city counselors, we hold legal liability. So if a bad decision were made on the part of the hospital trust or TPWA trust or any other trust of the city, how does that liability work and how does that carry over to us as the governing entity?
So first off, and this will probably make the trustees in the room feel better. Uh, it does state in state law that trustees are not personally liable for errors and omissions that the trust commits that are apart from their fiduciary role to to safeguard and benefit the trust assets. So if a doctor makes a mistake somewhere along the line, a a trustee is not going to be held personally liable for that. What we're talking about here is is liability for, for, you know, mismanagement of funds, things like that. That's where really the city and the trust could get in trouble. The main thing, when when I look at this as far as liability, I look at it as as recourse against claims, you know, against, um, you you've got construction contracts, you've got, um, you know, vendors, merchants, things like that that are out there. Having the trust in place, because it's a separate legal entity, those are their own separate debts. Um, when they do a financing that is out of their revenues, and that's the sole thing that's pledged for the repayment of the debt, if something happens and they default, that does not trickle back up to the city. The city has not made a pledge of its general revenues. Uh, there's no pledge of an ad valorem, levy a general obligation bond. There's no sales tax or anything like that backing it. As long as it's truly contained to them, then then that's where it would stay. And I think that's important when you look at at the city and its finances, knowing that you've got that security, that you are not going to have to all of a sudden go out and levy a new tax to to support something. I mean, it it it's self-contained. When you, when you, when you look at, you know, the the scary example, the thing that always keeps me up at night is county jails. When you see a lawsuit against a county jail, if you get a a defendant that comes in, files suit against the sheriff or a county jail, what have you, and wins, that judgment goes on the tax rolls. There's no vote. There's no appeal. I mean, once, once the 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 claim has been reached its final stage, that goes on the tax rolls. That gets paid off within three years, period. You don't, you don't get to have a conversation about it. So that's, that's the situation that you want to avoid. Here, you don't have to worry about that, because we don't have any claim on on general obligations, on ad valorem taxes, on sales tax or anything like that.
One of our counselors is a trustee. Another one is a board member for the foundation. Is there any fundamental difference between those two positions?
Between a a foundation board member and a trustee?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the foundation is also a completely separate entity. I mean, that that's the five oh one C three. I'm assuming it supports the hospital. So that's, that's a separate entity. Um, whatever it does, it's on its own. Now, when you start looking, there there is a, there's a way to do financings through a five oh one C three conduit. To my knowledge, that has not happened here, so if if that ever occurred, you might want to look at something, but but yeah, I mean, there, those are, those are two separate roles. There's two separate boards, separate obligations, rights, responsibilities, you know. The foundation board can't direct the hospital trust to do anything and 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 vice versa. And that's when you get into into nonprofit law, into some tax consequences of that. But you 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 again have to have a wall between your 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 five oh one and its beneficiary. And you can't, the 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 beneficiary, in this case, the hospital, has to be separate and it can't control the activities of its foundation. It's a, it's a little bit closer of a relationship, I think, than what you see with the municipality and public trust, but but there's still a wall there. So so those are, those are two separate roles.
And vice versa, the trustees cannot control the actions of the foundation, correct?
Correct. Now, that's not saying, so I I I sit on the the hospital foundation in Norman. And the hospital will frequently say, hey, here's something that we would like. I don't know if you guys have room in your budget for it, but it, here's the other things that we're doing, and this would dovetail nicely, you know, that, that's a conversation that can happen. But ultimately, we get to go back and say, yeah, we're going to fund that, or no, find it somewhere else.
Sorry, one more question and I'll stop. Um, something that Bree, something that Bree, I said that last time?
I drove all the way up here. You're good.
Something that Bree had mentioned, and, you know, to my understanding, is, you know, the two major benefits, two major benefits for, you know, a trust hospital like we have is the tax, the tax benefits, and then the medical malpractice. And so as that medical malpractice relates to what you would consider to be THA or the hospital itself, do those physicians that are acting for these joint ventures receive that same medical malpractice liability coverage under the umbrella of the THA?
That that's, that's a case by case determination. It depends on how they set up the joint venture. It depends on if those providers have their own insurance, kind of how they're covered. But whatever those activities are, would not bleed up to the city. The other thing that I want to add, you you listed out the two benefits. The third benefit is flexibility in issuing debt. Hospitals not have uh debt limitations on it the way a city does. So that allows them to to do more things quicker than than the city could do.
Any other questions?
Can you kind of, you just mentioned debt limitations. Can you kind of talk about that for a second?
Sure. State of Oklahoma does not like debt, and that goes back to to the constitution, to the founding of the state. When 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 the drafters of our constitution put it together, they impose limitations on the amount of indebtedness that a government can incur at any one time. Generally speaking, that's limited to ten percent of the net assessed valuation of the property contained within whatever the governmental unit is. Now, there there are exceptions to that. There are ways you can exceed that. And that's tied to to your underlying property taxes. Then there are limitations as far as sales taxes go, as how much of, you know, how much you can borrow, how much you can in debt in yourself in any one year. So when you've got a city that's doing a general obligation bond issue or a sales tax issue or something like that, you've got to take all those into into account. Schools have the same situation. You know, they've got to go through and say, here's what our debt limitation is. Here's where we are when we add this on. We're below the ten percent cap, fifteen in some cases, depending on how they structured the the issue and how they called the election. Public trusts don't have that limitation. A public trust can become indebted to as much as it wants to. It's basically only constrained by what its underlying revenues are. So, you know, you'll you'll see a lot of times, you know, you've got a a public works authority. City can pass a sale tax and say, you know, we're going to dedicate the proceeds of this sales tax to do road improvements or whatever you want to do. Well, you've got sales tax collections coming in. You're going to, say you, say you bring in a million dollars a year. That's what you got. You're going to go fix a million dollars worth of roads, potholes, bridges, what have you. Then you're done. You see this a lot in in schools around the state. You you go kind of, especially in rural areas, you'll see the school, it's got five buildings. One of them's brick, one of them is cinder block, one of them is slab, one of them's prefab. It's because they hit their debt limit every year. They couldn't build out everything they needed to do, because they borrowed as much as they could. They did it, and they waited the next year and borrowed again. So what's your public works authority would do in that situation? Instead of doing it, pay as you go, you you bring in your million dollars. You figure out, okay, we've got a million dollars in sales tax collections, and we've got this tax that's going to be for twenty years. How much can we borrow against that? We can have all the money right now. So what that allows you to do is that allows you to fund improvements now, build out the entire thing so that the people that are actually present, you're paying sales tax today, get the benefit from it. You pay it off in today's dollars, at today's construction costs, and you are paying it back as revenues come in in the future with inflated dollars as to what their value is at that time. The other thing that allows you to do is capture future growth. So you you go in and you say, we're going to fix, we're going to fix the infrastructure in this area. You do that, a developer comes along and says, hey, that's nice. I think I'll build a restaurant there. Now you get more sales tax coming on, you've increased your 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 rate of sales tax coming in. That allows you to do things like pay it off quicker or do other projects. So having a trust in the middle allows you to do that, whereas you couldn't just do that on your own as a city.
Okay, so earlier you mentioned, um, when a trust dissolves, and then you stated one more time, in that event, that would come back, those assets would revert back to the city, correct?
That's correct.
What are some instances of when it, what would cause a trust to dissolve?
Trust dissolves basically in three situations. Um, one is when its purposes have expired. I'll I'll tell you, I've never seen a trust expire because its purposes have gone away, because all the public trusts that I've ever worked with has as its trust, you're going to further educational opportunities, we're going to promote industrial development, we're going to provide for medical uses of the community. It's all essentially permanent purposes that don't go away. So I've never seen that one happen. The second way is when the trust by itself decides to dissolve. And we've, we've been involved in that in a couple of different cases. We've had some counties that have had industrial development authorities. They go back and look and say, look, we haven't done anything with this for twenty years. Its purposes have been taken over by another trust. Why are we keeping this on the books? So that would be an act of the trust to dissolve itself, and that happens from time to time. The third one, you can get a judicial determination to terminate a trust. Now you're going in front of a judge in district court. You know, and and that would only happen basically if you had a situation where a trust, there there was a collapse somewhere in there. You don't have trustees anymore. You don't have revenue. Some something would have happened to the trust to where it's still sitting there, but can't dissolve itself. Those are the only three times that I've 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 seen or know where a trust could dissolve. But when that happens, anything that's left, you you go through this whole process of of closing out your accounts, paying off any outstanding debt. Um, I I would like to point out that a trust by state law cannot dissolve while it has outstanding debt on the books. So if you've got a trust that has a bond issue out there, that trust has to stay in place until it's gone. But once you've wrapped all that stuff up, paid any outstanding contractors you have, you know, all the things that you would normally think about when you're wrapping up the business. At the end of that, anything that's left would go to the beneficiary, which is municipality, city, county, whoever that set up the trust.
You're a brave soul to pick this type of law.
Brave's not the word I would use, but thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you so very much for your comments, for your thoughtful work on this, for bringing this to us today for clarification. Very much appreciate your assistance and your help with this.
You're very welcome. Um, I I continue to serve. If you guys have anything else in the future, if, you know, at this point, it it needs to be a conversation of of the two respective boards as to how you want to proceed. And I'm I'm here to serve until you guys tell me not to. So thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
If we have roll call, please.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Thank you very much.